The meeting is called to work. Are there any comments? Any changes, notations?
Positively at the agenda. I will.
Do we have seconds?
I second you.
Okay. All in favor?
I.
Okay. The agenda is approved. Public communication. Do we have any public communications?
Oh, I have nobody. Okay.
None? Okay. Our last meeting was April 10th. Has everybody reviewed the minutes of the meeting of April 10th? There any requests for changes, comments, thoughts? May we have a motion to approve the minutes?
Well, we approved the minutes from last meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I agree.
Okay, the minutes are approved. For race along here. Library director's report, that would be Keith.
That would be me. I'm getting my. Yeah, to go. Well. Hold on, because this is not the agenda that I sent to Sarah. It's not one I sent. So, there was supposed to be another line on here that said, not just vacancy, but new members to the board. And I don't have a copy of that with me. Okay, so I am going to, yeah, here, I do have a copy. This is what I sent you. Under new business, I put Board of Directors vacancy as one item, and welcome new members overview of new books presented by me. And she did not put that on here. Just the vacancy. So, I'm going to do that now, then. That's okay with your approval?
Sure.
First of all, let me start with my report. You got all the statistics. We're doing pretty much normal for May. And, but June is really starting to pick up as far as number of people coming through the door, and the checkouts, and holds, and everything, so. And then, we hired a new part-time 69-hour clerk, Marcella, who is fabulous, is going to the University of British Columbia and getting her master's in logistics.
Wow.
No, linguistics. Linguistics. And so, she's leaving July 19th. So, I got permission from the mayor to hire another 69-hour person and have that person work alongside Marcella. Because Marcella is excellent at doing the CANBA. So, that person should start next week. And the person we hired, her name is Hannah Rayber. And if you ever go to Pizza Factory, she's the final girl that runs the front desk. She volunteered, well, I've known her for 14 years. Michelle's known her longer, so. She's volunteered here, she's worked on the desk herself. So, she'll, she interviewed very well.
And she's trying to be librarian.
She is a librarian.
She is a librarian.
She completed her master's in library science this year at the University of Washington.
Wow.
So, yeah, so she'll be a good division. And if she can handle customers at the counter at Pizza Factory. So, that's, that's the main news I have. We are really gearing up for summer. May, June, July, and August are our biggest busiest months. So, I just, this is the kind of stuff that Marcella puts out, these flyers. So, I wanted to bring you two up to speed and see just, just what we're doing. And feel free to take one of anything, or some, you know, whatever, spread the word. Summer reading starts on Friday. And so, we do summer reading for kids, teens, and adults. And we have three different components for that. And. I'm very excited to show you. This is going to be, and I could, the kids went out, but this is going to be the theme. The kids, for sure, it's Adventures Begin at Your Library is the theme for our book. And we run until August 9th. And we have Thursday, we, every Thursday, we have a performer for the kids' programs. And the friends of the library, they need to that. It's about $20,000 that they pay. So, we're excited about that. And then, the teen, oh, this is the brochure. Nico did, Nico does all the teen stuff. And so, this is, they give this brochure when they sign up. And then, they read a book about another country, read a book about dinosaurs, sports, trains, color it in, come in, go to the weekly program, and get a really cool toy each time they do something. All paid for by the friends. So, that is really cool. Michelle has a little booklet for the teens. Again, they read and get really cool prizes that are donated by the businesses in Ocean Shores. And they have kickoff party this Friday. And they have a murder mystery night, and then a finale party in August. And this is their little stamped passport, if you want, for adventure for the summer reading. And she does a flyer about it. These are all the businesses that have given, and they get really cool prizes and stuff weekly. So, and then, in each of the windows in the businesses, they gladly hang a flyer. And she walks up, we've done this for so long now, she walks up and they go, "Oh, it must be summer reading." And, and gets them, gets them going, so. And then, for the adults, we do a bingo card. And it's things like read the perfect beach read, a book of poetry, read Christmas in July, and so on, and so on. When they complete their bingo, either the line bingo or the blackout, they will be in a drawing for Amazon gift cards. And the friends pay for all that. And it's four $25 gift cards and two $50 gift cards for blackouts. So, that's the, and then, we have a lot of programs for adults and during the year. And speaking of that, June, we have Jeff Evans is coming for the magic show next Thursday. And the friends are doing an ice cream social. So, the ice cream starts at 1:00, Jeff starts at 2:00, and it's all over at 3:00. We launch all the sticky away. And so, he's always fun, I've known him for 30 years. And then, the next week, we have Leif and Louis, who is a comedy rope trick performer, fabulous. Dungeons and Dragons is continuing, Storytime is continuing. Next week, one of the special programs is Museum of the North Beach is bringing artifacts and talking about the history of the North Beach. And it should be just fun, he's got all sorts of stuff he's bringing. We had a really successful pickleball. She came, and we actually had pickleball going on in our pavilion. It was really, really cool, just in a library, you know, outside on a sunny day. It was just fabulous. And we had a pretty good turnout, I thought.
We did.
So. And then, the art in the library this month is the wood carvings. And they're not really carvings, they are kind of carved, but he's a cabinet maker, or was. And he takes the little pieces, scraps, from making cabinets of all different types of woods, all different colored woods, and makes these pictures. And they're fabulous. Absolutely. Okay. And then, in July, we have a hot dog party for everybody. And that's supported by the friends with Hooping with Mindy. Mindy, I don't know if anybody went to the wearable art show, but she was there, and she's quite entertaining. Genealogy Cafe in July, where people can come and ask Carrie, who owns the genealogy shop in town, and ask her questions and get help, and get working on their genealogy stuff. And a shipwreck program. One of our friends at the library is bringing photos and maps and artifacts of all the shipwrecks on our coast. So, it should be, should be really interesting, she's very thorough. We have the reptile person coming in July. Roberto the Magnificent, who juggles and throws, I think, bowling pins in the air, and he's. And then, the murder mystery. And, oh, we have an author, we have two authors in July. We have Stephen Craig, who wrote a book about the Coast Guard Cutter, the Coast Guard Cutter Jarvis, that grounded and nearly sank near Dutch Harbor in Alaska. And this is his story on how the crew and the boat were saved. It should be fantastic. He travels nationwide to promote his books, so, lives here part-time. And then, Sheila Roberts is coming again. And she's not going to be promoting her books, but promoting How to Write Your Best Book. And then, her husband, who's also an author and has self-published, is going to talk on how to self-publish a book. And she's a fabulous speaker. And then, we have the Storytimes, the Computer Classics, Bookatechy, Dungeons and Dragons, and the list goes on and on and on. So, that's what I wanted to tell you about my report. Any questions on my report or any of that at the moment? Okay, then I'm going to move on to the new members. And what I have made for you is a notebook of Board of Trustees stuff. And Alex and Jeff, you're supposed to have a notebook, but since I was running stuff off, I just ran off copies of everything for you as well.
You look.
Where you got?
I know. Long time, 14 years ago, Andy.
Did you update it?
Andy hired me, he was on the board at the time that I was hired.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. And we're both still here. So, I'm not going to, I just want to give you an overview on this, and it can be your bedtime reading tonight. But what we have is Board of Trustees. And then, when you open it up, there's information about the foundation. And there's your strategic plan for the board. And then, information about joining the friends. And so, that's in there. And the very first page is a list of all your emails. So, if you want to email everybody, that's what it is. A word of caution for the two new people. You can only email me or one person, you can't email everybody at the same time, it's a sitting rule. We do have one vacant position, I'll talk about that later on the agenda. On the second page, this is important, the lady on the foundation board drew this up, and I think it's an excellent flow chart, that really describes how the friends, the governing board, and the foundation all support the library as one piece. So, that's the, the second page in here. And then, there's a handbook. Denise Sires, who's now on council and was previously on this board, pulled this together for some other new people. And it just talks about the role of the trustee, the role of the director, a little bit of the friends, the funding, the legal authority, all that kind of stuff, so. And then, the next page is the resolution on that you can become a board member and for how long. And then, there's the chapter 2.6 in the municipal code, that is how we're governed. And then, a picture of our webpage. Just a snapshot, we do have our own webpage. We have a paid webmaster, which is supported in part by the Friends of the Library. And then, the city pays as well, as well. And then, there's a city webpage, and on that city webpage is a library board information page. And then, and your current members are on that sheet, and your term limits are on that sheet, or term limits. And then, there's a copy of the budget for this year. And this is important, because next meeting, you're going to have budget. And I may call or ask you to call a meeting in July, as soon as I speak a timeline on when the city needs budget information from me. So, you're a governing board, you, I present a budget, you edit it, approve it, change it, whatever. And then, they have a timeline where I have to then go talk to the mayor, and then, we have to go present it to council. And then, council deliberates, and it's usually approved by the first meeting in December. So, it's quite a long process, it's a two-year budget.
Yeah. Yeah. The current members, we don't have Vicky and Becky. Where, at least. It's page 22. Where it says current members. So.
Oh, that's because I printed it before they were perfect. Yeah, they're, they're here.
Oh, perfect.
They're on there, I, because I looked at it, so, good catch.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah, no, you are on the city webpage, that's where she was on the city's webpage, and you click on Library Board, and you can see all of your names and information. And so, the budget's in there, and we'll do more on that. And like I said, I may have you come to a meeting in July. And then, there's the calendar of events for the board. The bylaw, and that's, that's pretty much an overview of what your role is on this board. Any questions right off the top of the, I know it's a lot of information, but.
I do have a question.
Yeah.
So, the meeting you say 4:00 P.M., is it really 3:00 P.M.?
It's really 3:00 P.M.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. That's on the calendar of events.
Yeah.
I did this a long time ago.
That's okay.
We used to, yeah.
Just on a makeshift.
So, I will go through and change that, and you put an up-to-date calendar. Events.
But nothing, thank you, this is a lot of information.
Right, and it's pretty complete, I think, so. I forgot anything. No. And then, each of you, Alex and Jeff, have a neck badge type thing. If you go places, like Jeff came to the dedication of the sign yesterday. And he wore his badge as representative of this board. I appreciate you coming to that, too, thank you. And so, would you two like hot pink, orange, green, or black? I only have one hot pink.
Hot pink.
And.
I'll go with green.
Okay. Let me jot that down, Vicky hot pink. And Becky green. All right, I'll have those for you at the next meeting. And then, as I said at the top of the meeting, Jeff is acting as president, and she's acting as secretary, she's been secretary. Ah, the secretary. And I think that's all I need. Yeah, that's all, Jeff.
Okay. Under old business, there, there's adoptions for April 25th and July 23rd, city council meetings.
See, she didn't put that right either, because what I put was June 25th and July 23rd.
June.
Yeah. So, if you want to make a note, it should be June 25th. So, what we do, you two, is the board takes turns, and we go to the council meeting, and basically, just tell them what's going on with the library, this kind of stuff, for the most part. And we do it, they meet twice a month, we go once a month, usually the fourth, yeah, second, or the fourth Tuesday, that we do that. And it takes probably, what, five, eight minutes? Is that how you do? Yeah.
But we don't have the three-minute limitation, because we are a report, council report, rather than a public conference.
Right. And it's at 6:00 P.M.
At the convention center.
At the convention.
Right. And you'll see the agendas for those are posted the week before the council meetings. And you'll see your name on here on their agenda. It's to, you're going to be doing the speaking for the staff. So, we need somebody for June 25th, since we're not meeting right now in July. Need somebody for July 23rd. And the way it works is basically, I send you this information, and they, you write it out, they write it all out, so it's script, so. You just, and then, they usually have me group it and make sure there's no errors. And then, you just get up and read it. So, it's not that, and there's no questions, it's just information to the council, you're done. So, who wants to do June and July, or June?
I just did one.
Yeah.
So, probably I shouldn't do it the next one, but I'm guessing that you folks might want to see how what is done.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, tell me about putting you on the spot?
I'll be back for vacation, you're timed to do the June 25th.
You will?
Yeah.
Do you have time to prep for it?
Well, we get back the 24th, so.
Well, you can do it before you go, because I've got all the info.
Yeah, if you got all the stuff.
Yeah, I can give it to you today, even.
Cool. Lovely.
Thank you, sorry about that.
Can we come back out?
Yeah. Like Suki said, we can, we can do reports.
Well, just so we can have Sarah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just so what?
We can observe.
Yeah.
So, we know.
Yeah, it's an open, it's an open public meeting.
Okay.
And it's at the top of the council's agenda, pretty much, they have, when they give ceremonies and all that kind of stuff, and then, and then, you're free to leave, you don't have to stay. So, but if you want to do that, we just cannot conduct any board business if there's three of you there. It just has to be observation. So, that's nice, makes it forum, we can't do that.
Okay.
So, anybody game for the 23rd?
I'll do it.
Okay. Okay, so I have Jeff on the 25th, and Vicky on the 23rd. Thank you both.
I should mention that if you do not want to go to the city council meeting, you can hear it on the radio or watch it. So, just FYI.
That's a good point. Only if you have the.
Whatever.
Yeah.
Well, for TV, but still, you know, I can listen to it.
I was on one thing, too.
It's all standing going on.
So, yeah, you can, you can see it on the webpage, can't you?
Yeah.
All right. So, it's actually on the City OSCO webpage, and you can actually view it here, like you're watching it.
You can live, we live stream it through Zoom.
And it takes a few days after to get it on, right, Nicole?
For the recording for later, yeah.
Yeah.
So, she has to sneak into the agenda.
Right. But the live stream is immediate.
Yeah.
Right. And it is on radio live, and that's at 88.1, what'd they change it to, 88.1?
2.
2, 88.2. It's the local KOSW. Thank you. And back to you, boss.
Okay. We are now on reports.
New business.
Sorry.
New business. I'm going to do vacancy.
Oh, right, I'm sorry. Vacancy.
That's okay. We have had the advertisement out since before you all even turned in your applications. It's still out there, it's announced a council meeting, and we have had no applications come in since we did you all, so. We'll just leave it open until somebody fits it. But if you know it, that you think would be good, having a lot of city application like you all did, and get it turned in, and we'll work on it. They go to Sarah, and then, she sends them right to me. And then, I talk to you guys. So, that's where that is.
Any other new business? Now, reports, Friends of the Library.
You should be doing that, but I've been remiss, because I've been living around.
The friends are going strong as usual, their book sale last month brought in almost $1,400. Hold me on that number, it was 13, 509 or something like that. Almost 14, usually they're like 600, 800, 1300. And so, they're going up for another one, 4th of July weekend. We've got a great crew, and what I like about the friends is, pretty much, it's not the same people doing everything, like some organizations, they have a nice working group of people. And they work very hard. And they give me a budget for all these programs. And it's around $25,000 a year, and that money is from book sales, and then, any donations, and miscellaneous stuff that comes in, but the majority of it comes from selling these books. So, it's, it's huge. And they have the ice cream social coming up next week. And then, several other events, we have Smokey the Bear Birthday Party coming that they're sponsoring, the Hot Dog Festival. And in October, we're having a huge author fair. We have 63 people that we are sending invitations to for the author fair. We had the first one last year. I've done them before, I love them, it's one of my favorite events. And we just piled the library full. Everybody gets a half table, they decorate it, they sign, sell their books, talk about their books. So, because we have 60-some that might come, we're having it on two Friday afternoons. And it's going to be a $4,000 cost event, because we make it elegant, and it has gold, and it's shiny, and it's dressy, and it's just a real, real fun event. And it's in the afternoon on a Friday in October. So, that's basically what they're working on. They are looking for a president and a secretary for next year. So, but I kind of have this, keep a rule that if you're on one board, you can't be on another. And I've only made two exceptions in the 14 years I've been here. So, and one was her, she's on the foundation board. And one is Kathy Baker, who's on the friends board and the foundation board. But other than that, I want to keep a wide range of people that are participating, and not the same people doing it time. So, I think that's about it. Keep with the friends.
And the foundation report?
You want to talk about it? On foundation, anything? I can do it.
What if I was, if I hadn't known, I would have been.
I know, I just, I'm going to throw this on her, because I just said that. Next time, why don't you do it?
Okay.
And then, that'll, you know, I don't have to talk the whole time.
Okay.
Thank you. That's Selene that's out there, that's foundation, they made for the whole thing. Yep, it was, it was huge undertaking, it went very smooth, the whole, from the idea to, yesterday's dedication was very, very smooth. And the company that we worked with, CMD, was fabulous. They're a new company, they were hungry, they did a fabulous, fabulous, fabulous. And then, they had an event on May 29th on successful financial planning. They had three speakers, Keybang, Edward Jones, and an attorney, who's a friend of mine from Bellevue. And we had, didn't we go to that, maybe some people? It was, it was full, it was really nice, it was very well received. So, right now, since the sign is done, we're working on having the attorney come back and just do a one-shot show of this stuff, because he was very engaging and a good speaker, and people wanted more, and wanted more, and wanted more. So, we're looking at an August date, and maybe September, it's not Sep yet. And then, the foundation's also sponsoring a speaker from Tacoma that's coming on his own dime. And he's in one of those, like panorama in Aberdeen, or that's Olympia, where you, you move there, and you own a house, and then, you don't feel so good, or something happens, so you go, it's called CCRC, but I can't remember what they're, something community, something retirement.
Yeah, some digital attention?
Something like that. But there's, there's like 10 of these in the state. And I didn't even know they existed, I just saw assisted living places. But this is totally different than assisted living. You can move to this place, you be by the house, and then, oh, I don't want to keep up the yard and all the house anymore, and it's all in the same grounds, they have break rooms, they have exercise facilities, the whole thing. And so, you move to an apartment. You kind of get a little older, and you're not getting around, so you move to, you know, like a smaller thing, you know? And then, finally, they put you in like an assisted living, and they have dementia centers and all of that. So, anyway, this guy from Tacoma runs one, it's called Alisio. And he is going to talk about that versus assisted living. And the foundation is going to sponsor. So, that's about it on foundation. And just so you know, foundation doesn't have members, it's just a five-member board, and me. And the Friends of the Library has paid members. And right now, we're about 107. About 107 members for the Friends of the Library that pay the annual fee. So, that's the difference between, one of the differences. You two.
Alex, what report to the council?
So, I, I read the report to the council. I emphasize, because I thought the story was great. Jeff Evans, who became a magician, the captain, wrote a book for the library. And then, I mentioned all the other activities that. Yeah, thank you.
Email account. I haven't seen anything, and I'm going to get with, I guess it's Nico, I'm going to have. I haven't seen anything, and I'm going to get with, I guess it's Nico, I'm going to have you put it on my phone.
Thank you.
Nick.
Yeah.
And, and make sure that, you know, you're not missing anything. We have an email address, we can address questions to the, to the board. And neither Jenny nor I ever actually saw anybody send us an email. But it's, it's there, so I'm thinking maybe, you know, there, there's something, you know, not working right. Anyway, I'll take that with Nick.
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 I have Nick and Nico. And they're both the same age.
Yeah, yeah.
Jeff even likes a lot.
Okay, I don't feel so bad.
It's like your kids, you know?
Anyway, I'll, I'll take care of that one, Nick, after our meeting is over. Where are the other business? Okay, uh, next meeting is November fourteenth, three o'clock.
Actually, I think there is, can we go back for just a second?
Sure.
Other business? And yes, I wanted to know the.
Okay.
For being here. She can skip over everyone.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Okay, oh, at the August meeting, I'm sorry, Jeff, I had my file right here. I will be presenting three policies that need amending. And one of the charges of this board is to do policies. And, um, one of them is regarding how, between the signs that's in the parkway. One of them is a meeting room policy that staff wants changed. And the third one is they passed a senate bill that started June sixth, you may have seen the New Green signed by the door that says, weapons are not allowed by Senate, by R C W, six, whatever it was. Yeah, we, we need to get that wording in our code of conduct policy. So I'll have those ready to send out to you to look at before the meeting, and then we can discuss and then take action, what we want to do that. So, and then the other thing we will have at the August meeting, and like I said a couple times, in, maybe in July is the budget. So we've got some significant work coming up. That's all.
Can I ask your question on that, I'm sorry? So you have a meeting room policy, and then a policy for armed guns and stuff?
And what was the third one, I'm sorry? The sign. Oh, it's, and if you go on either the city's webpage or our webpage, and I put a copy of both in your binder, you'll see all the policies on both pages.
Okay.
And routinely, once a year, maybe, yeah, about once a year, we review all of them. And pull them up, just finished with that a couple months ago. And so. You check them, but. Yeah, but to make any revisions on them, I need your other provisions.
Okay.
I don't miss.
This is serious.
Yeah.
The thing to remember is you are governing, not just advising. And in reality, you are my boss. If I retire or quit, then you have to replace me, it's not the city, it's support, and that's in the R C Ws.
Well, they're not going anywhere.
No, no.
You have a question?
Yes, let's just be much, meaning correct of this, Parks Board meeting, you are a governing board, which is a fiduciary. Which means you have more control over what happens to the park. State Parks Board has over what they do. And in fact, they were upset because they recommended something council and council would do. And council doesn't have it, it's council decided by their own, but you decide what happens. Not the health.
Yep, okay. Sometimes it's a negotiation with the council.
Mm-hmm.
To, like on budget, I'm going to present some things, and I've been presenting one of them for, oh, way back in Crystal's term, danger. And so I'm hoping it might get approved this year, but it may not. So just because we ask for it doesn't always mean we're going to get it, but it's still fine.
The council has control over it. Decision on what it's.
Yeah. And I'm sorry, what was your name?
Jenny.
Okay, um, if we have nothing else, then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Second?
Okay.
All in favor? We are adjourned.
Okay. Feel free to say what you want. Please say my name. Hi, Lisa. Bye.